Thank you. All right, so it's 5:30. This is our regular city work session for the City of Minatrista, April 19th, 2021. First order of business is the roll call to make sure everybody's microphone and is working. I'll start with, my name is Lisa Whalen. I am the mayor. And council members present this evening are Anne McGregor here, and Kathleen Ruffkin.
Here.
And Pam Mortensen.
Here.
And John Chamberlain.
Here.
And then staff present this evening, we have our administrator, Mike Barone.
I am here.
Public Works Superintendent Gary Peters.
I am here.
And Chief of Police Paul Falls.
Here.
And Community Development Director David Abel.
I am here.
And Finance Director Brian Grimm.
Yes, I'm here.
Okay, good. Director of Administration Ally Palfos.
I am here.
Our City Clerk Chris Lindquist.
I am here.
And then our Engineer with WSB is Allison Fousky.
I'm here.
And our Attorney for this evening, Andrew Biggerstaff with Kennedy and Graven.
I'm here.
All right, good. So with that, our agenda includes Jennings Bay Cove Roads discussion, a broadband update and discussion, and then rounding it off would be our nuisance ordinance. So just a housekeeping item, should we not get to or not have enough time to finish the nuisance ordinance discussion, I'm going to recommend that we move it to our next work session and have it be the first item on the agenda. I'm hoping we can finish it up tonight, but if not, I think we'll just move it to the next one and then finish it up. That would be at our, I think it's April, May, is it 5th or 3rd? Anyhow, at the first meeting. 3rd, okay. Thank you. So we'll finish it up then at our work session, May 3rd. With that, we'll start out with the Jennings Bay Cove Road discussion. I asked staff to put this on our agenda for tonight because if we decide to do a road, Jennings Bay Neighborhood Roads, we need to get started on those right away. As we found out, the bidding climate right now is more favorable if you get your bids out in maybe early to mid-January. And so with that updated schedule, we need to be looking at this immediately. So with that, I'm going to hand it over to Allison.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Members of Council. So the Jennings Bay, pardon me, the Jennings Cove area has been included in the project planning information packets for the last four go rounds. And this project area is based on corings. The project scope is removal and replacement of the pavement. The pavement condition scores from 2017 are included in the packet on page two with the ranges noted accordingly for each segment. And the estimated cost for each segment is also noted. The costs that are shown in the packet have been updated from the last time the council saw this. So we are, we have made an adjustment on the recommended budget amounts based on what we're currently seeing in the bidding environment. So we're, the recommended budget for this area is $763,000 for that removal and replacement of the pavement. The reason, as Mayor Whalen alluded to, bringing this forward for some discussion for next year's project is the desire to get out a project for bid in early, as early as possible in 2022. The reason being that's when contractors start looking for work for their crews. They typically don't look around the holiday season. They start looking after that. And with the timeline associated with a project like this where a portion of the project costs are assessed, there is quite a bit of time necessary to prepare the feasibility report and to hold the public hearing and prepare the plans and specifications. So council is seeing this much earlier than typical. I believe last year, we started the process in September, which, you know, we were working towards the goal of going earlier. So I think this is a good opportunity to have this discussion with council to see if there's a desire to do this project next year. As indicated in the September copy of the Planning Information Packet, I heard from about, I think it was about nine residents last fall about the condition of their roads. They had some concerns of that. And then again here, within the last week, week and a half, I heard from a couple of residents, I believe Mayor Whalen heard from a handful of folks as well. So wanted to bring this to the council's work session here to see if we want to look at programming this for 2022. Looking at budget, when we look at the current fund balance for roads is about 1.2 million with $725,000 in the levy. So that brings us to just over 1.9 million for funding for this year. And we have the projects out for bid and the estimated street improvement cost for 2021 is just shy of 1.5 million. So we are forecasting a little bit of extra money at the end of this year, just around 400,000. And then with a 2022 levy discussion has been somewhere in the neighborhood of 800,000. So, you know, with a $1.2 million budget for 2022, if that's what the council would like to look at, there would still be an opportunity to do some mill and overlay streets as was discussed previously to try to get ahead of, you know, some of these more expensive type projects. So with that, I would be happy to answer any questions that the council has. And, you know, with timing of the project, that sort of thing. But I'm just looking for some direction this evening from the council if this is something you'd like to see for 2022.
Thank you, Allison. So kind of just for clarification, I actually think we started talking about our 21 road projects in like April of 2020, about this timeline. The other thing that the city, for the two new council members, what we've started to do in the last several years prior to a public hearing in ordering plans and specs and all of that, we've held a open house, a neighborhood open house. This isn't a requirement by law, by state statute, but we found that it's very helpful for a number of reasons. And so that, having that open house for the residents has been very good and has been received very well, very well. And then the other reason is to get a feel for, or let the residents know approximately, give them some kind of high level idea in terms of what the assessments might be. And so that's why it's added a little extra time to the schedule, but it's a very beneficial meeting to have. So that's why. I'll, I know at one time I had recommended or talked about maybe just doing mill and overlays. However, I think with our fund balance, we might want to consider adding this project to next year because it looks like we may have enough to do not only this project, but also doing mill and overlays. So with that, I'll turn it back to the council. I'll start with Pam or John, anybody who would like to start with questions or comments?
This is John. I don't have any questions. Agreed. This has been on, when we get a list in the spring, Projects A, Projects B, Projects C. This one has been on the spectrum there for a while. We've all heard, I'm sure, not only the mayor and WSB and the city, I'm sure, but I think all the council members have probably heard from residents. I have personally, just this past week at YIM. I think, from my point of view, this needs to be done and needs to be done sooner versus later. It isn't getting any better. I've been over there just about every year because I have some friends over there and it certainly has been deteriorating. And it obviously is not going to get any better. So I would, I would like to see this get done versus, I mean, if it comes down to what dollars do we have after we get these bids in in the next couple of weeks, what bids do we get on the roads, et cetera? I'd still say we have enough money next year to do this. And maybe then we don't have as many mill and overlays as we'd like to do. But I feel, my vote would be if we were voting, which we're not, but my belief is this needs to be done.
So John, would you, would you be in favor of a 2022 project then?
For sure.
Okay, thank you, John. Pam?
Well, I really like the fact that we're getting ahead of the game and it is beneficial to do that. I'm a little hesitant to just go forward with this one project when we don't have all of it right in front of us to discuss. I know this one has to be done, but I'm almost thinking we should wait until we get the bids in from the projects being done this year to see what are we going to get done this year and then plan the strategy for 2022. So I don't know what the others feel like, you know, on this, but I hate just jumping onto this one project without looking at all of it in one, at one time.
Yeah, we've, as John mentioned, this has been on the list for the last three years, I believe, as, as an option. If you recall, I think it was even last year and we discussed it. And then recently, another one was added and that was the, correct me if I'm wrong, Allison, the Mornings, Morning View, that, that area, but that was a lot more costly. So it seems from the numbers, from the high, high in the sky number, you know, way up high numbers, just an estimate, that we could do the Jennings Cove area plus we would have additional funding to do mill and overlays and, and overlays. And that would be the question of, that would then be the question, what do we do with, with the extra funds? How far can we stretch those?
Okay, are there any utilities involved in this project? I don't recall.
This area, there would, we don't anticipate utility work. There's no forced maintenance in the project area. I believe that it's been within the last few years, the sewer was televised. So we would just do some regular inflow and infiltration barriers on the manholes as needed, but nothing, nothing like we're seeing in these reclaim areas for the last couple of years that we've done.
There will be some catch base and work through the stormwater fund and also probably some drain tile, but very minimum drain tile work. So a little bit on the stormwater.
Okay, not anything close to what we're going through right now with Minneapolis and all the other ones, right?
No.
Correct. Okay. Well, I'd like to hear what Anne and Kathleen say.
Sure, yep. Anne, you want to go next?
Okay. Well, I want us to get as many projects done as possible. And I do agree with Pam that I, I'm under the impression we didn't actually rank the worst roads versus the best roads because there was an issue with the PCIs being too old, something like that. But, so I agree with Pam, it would be nice to know where this ranks in the, all of the bad roads to be done, but I don't have anything against doing this particular project.
Maybe, Allison, could you, do you know, can you answer Anne's question off the top of your head? Do you know where this would fall in terms of ranking?
Um, I mean, as far as roads that are above this, I don't have that off the top of my head. It's certainly one of those projects where it's one of the last remaining streets that we have corings for to know that the proposed project type, the removal and replacement of pavement is the recommended project. So the, anything else would just, any other recommendations for reclamation, for example, would be based on just the pavement scores, which is a good first step, but we like to get those corings to verify. I want to stay off the top of my head from the 2017 pavement condition scores. I think a lot of those pavement condition scores were still within the mill and overlay category, but with four years of freeze thaw and a lot of rain, I'm not sure what those scores will be coming in this, this summer and fall as we start getting the surveys completed and all the data put together.
When were we going to do another, more corings to kind of determine which roads would be up next? Or maybe in a five-year plan?
Sure, that's a great question. So what my recommendation to the council would be is once we get the pavement condition scores completed and we see where the system's at, we would have, you know, another work session discussion, looking at some project areas that the council would be, you know, staff would make some recommendations, council would provide direction on, on what areas to look into. And then at that point, we would take a look at what areas we'd like to get some coring information to verify what type of project should be done. So we would have it probably in the, in the fall of this year.
You'd have that information available in the fall of this year?
We would, we would look to get the corings done this fall, yes.
Okay. Anne, does that help at all?
Well, it helps. I take it that there's a timing issue and that's why this one's being brought up. And like I said, I'm not against doing it. I mean, I want us to do as many roads as we can.
Okay, yep. I think, yes, you're correct. It's a timing issue on this one. That's why it's being brought up. Kathleen?
I agree with Pam. I just have concerns about saying, let's do this road without knowing how much the roads this year are going to cost that we're already planning. And also, but I agree the road needs to be done or these roads need to be done. They're not good at all. My other concern is the, the new estimate you put, the 763. The report from September of 2020 has 731. So I'm wondering if that's a good estimate based on the numbers we're seeing now for how much the roads are costing, or if it's likely this is going to end up costing closer to the 800,000 that we currently have planned for the levy next year?
That's a great question. So the, you know, each time we look at these roads at the, the project planning packets, we try to provide the best information to the council as far as what we would look at for the budget. And so we did see some, some of the pricing increase from September until now, which is why we're seeing the higher, the higher estimate than what we originally put together. The, we're hopeful that these street prices will stabilize so that we won't see these, the two minutes prices go up. We do account for some inflation every year. So, you know, we do our best to provide a budget. We don't want to, you know, it's the, the challenge is if you over budget for a road, it would have been nice to, to have more streets in a mill and overlay category, for example, and budget that money for a mill and overlay. So it's, you know, we're doing our best to try to provide the council with our best estimate as possible for budgets.
Okay. So if we say go ahead with this for next year, what's the first step then that we would be doing? Or you guys would be doing, WP?
Sure.
Good question.
That's a great question. So the, the first step, what we've, what we've done in the past, I think it's the past two years, or did we just do it? We did it last year, was the first year, I believe, we did it, was to hold a neighborhood meeting before any work is done on the project at all to see if the neighbors are in, in support of the project. And the reason for that is back in 2019, we had a street reclamation project that consisted of several streets within Minatrista. And there was residents on one of the streets didn't want their, their street included in the project. And so their, their street was removed. And there was some good discussion at that point. And the lesson learned was to reach out to these residents before any work is done, that being a feasibility report and preliminary estimates to see if there's, if there's opposition to a project. Because if the residents are adamantly opposed, that's good information for the council to know before deciding what, what streets to include in a project. So what we would do is hold an open house with the, with the residents. And we would provide kind of a framework of this is the type of project that's being proposed. And this is the range of estimates that we typically see for this type of project. And kind of talk about how, you know, construction pricing is changing and that sort of thing. So that, you know, try to convey it to the best of our abilities that these aren't absolute costs. These are ranges based on what we've seen historically. And then if the, if the residents, which I would anticipate in this area, they would be in support of the project. If, if they are in support, then the next step would be to bring a professional services agreement to the council so that work can begin on the feasibility report for this project. And that's, that's part of the process for State Statute 429 when you're assessing a portion of the project cost. And then from there, we go on to preliminary plan, public hearing and plans, preparation of the plans and specifications.
Okay. How, like if we scheduled the neighborhood meeting, how many weeks or days notice do you give the, the neighbors? I mean, is this something we do in the next two weeks and the next week? How, how quick of a turnaround is there on this stuff?
We, good question. So I, my recommendation is to always try to provide about two weeks notice. And the reason being is that you can, to provide people the opportunity to work their schedule around that meeting, to provide them enough notice so that they can attend. And so that would be my recommendation to the council. So as far as turnaround, I don't know that we would, I think one of the things we'd want to look at is, the next couple of council meeting dates are coming up in May. We always want to stay away from major school events and that sort of thing. So it would probably be within the next four to six weeks would be my recommendation.
And Kathleen, prior to the open house, the engineers would have to put some preliminary numbers and estimates together as well. So it would take more than two weeks to put it together. So we're probably looking at somewhere around end of May, beginning of June, maybe, at the earliest?
Yes, I think that would be an appropriate timeline.
And then we're going to get the bids back for the rebid projects. Aren't we supposed to get those back before the May 3 meeting?
Yes. Bid opening is April 28th, yep.
So if we wait till the, the May 3 meeting to decide to do this, just so we get the numbers, that was, would that still be enough time to plan for a meeting at the end of May, early June, Allison?
I think so, yes. If, if, if we get, if the council is generally in support of looking at this project with the caveat being looking at where the bids come in for the 2021 project, you know, we can, that should provide us enough time to get this through. And we can provide council with an update on, on what our anticipated schedule would be at the next council meeting.
That's what I would be in favor. I just want to know what we're going to spend this year before we say for sure to the residents, you know, we want, we all agree we want to do this road, but I still want to know how much we're going to spend this year before we firmly tell our residents, hey, this is, you know, we're, we're planning on it, assuming you guys want it.
So maybe we could run through some numbers too, because I think that would kind of put a lot of minds at ease. So currently in our regular, at our regular meeting, Brian will be presenting some numbers and some facts. And as you saw in that packet, the fund balance. So the fund balance in our Road Improvement Fund was over 1.2 million. That does not include any of the levy that we're doing this year. So there's another 725,000 that will come, be coming to the city through our road levy. When you add that together, we're at 1,970,000 for this year, for our projects this year. If the projects come in at or approximately at or even above the estimates, I think the estimates are range somewhere between 1.4 and 1.5. That would leave us with over 400,000 to carry over into next year, possibly, again, possibly. The other thing is even, and again, we've been increasing our road levy every year by somewhere between 75,000 and 125,000. So if we do, even if we do a minimum of 75,000, that takes us up to 800,000 for next year. So just kind of to give you some, some idea in terms of what we're looking at in terms of numbers. That's why it's fairly safe to say we can do a project next year. And yes, we could wait till May 3rd. I just want to make sure that we, we don't get behind the eight ball because last year when we started the process, by the time we got, it took a while. It just takes a while to get all this together. So it's, turnaround isn't quick. All right. Any other comments?
Okay, this is Anne. Oh.
Go ahead. Anne, go ahead.
Okay.
Um, it's possible that we're also going to get money from the federal government too, right? That we could use for roads? Mike Barone, do you know?
Well, Mayor, as you recall, the CARES funding from 2020 is in our city coffers currently. I'm going to give you a ballpark. I think it's still right around half a million dollars. So you have that sitting there. And that's city money. That does not have to be used for anything related to the CARES Funding Act. That's now our money. We satisfied all the requirements by the feds on documenting to, in order to receive the money. The other chunk of money, which I was going to describe when we got to the broadband item, but you know, we're in line probably to get through the Biden stimulus that was recently passed in March, probably 800 to 900,000 dollars. That was contained in the staff report on the broadband with some information. Now that has some specific requirements. They do actually spell out water, sewer and broadband uses of that money. So we don't have a dime of that yet, but we're supposed to be getting it here in the next, I want to say month or six weeks. So, so I couldn't tell you if that could be used for roads or not. It might be. But I do know that specifically it's earmarked for water, sewer and, and broadband. So, and then all the other things that the mayor just kind of laid out about where we are financially with roads. So there's a couple of pots of money sitting out there. This is so unusual for local government to have pots of money to be able to spend on things.
Clarification I was going to make is that I think we would get some now and then some later, Mike, wasn't it? I mean, it wasn't, I mean, just as far as cash flow or timing, it was like, I think, and I don't think every, anything's been set in stone yet as far as how they're dispersing the funds or even, you know, as far as what the funds can be spent on still, I think being worked on. But I think it would be some now and some later, later is some, what I've, I've heard or read.
Yep, Brian's correct. I mean, we're not going to see if it's 800,000, let's say. I don't know what the real number will be, but it won't be all 800,000 this year. It'll be, I believe, a third or half of it this year. And then the remainder at a future point, probably roughly a year later. They did send, I think, a very realistic timeline, considering what you may spend it on. I believe it's the end of 2023. Is that correct, Brian? I think if you remember that you have.
I think it's, I think we have the, up until the, it was either middle or end of 2024 even to expend all the funds on eligible expenditure.
Okay. So, I mean, you know, if it's broadband, great, but it might take us that long to spend that, believe it or not, so.
But the funds that Mike was referring to, if you recall, we have a very large general fund balance and our fund. And our fund balance policy says between thirty-five and fifty percent, and we're well over that. And at some point we should be having a discussion as to, um, what are we going to do with the, uh, these funds? As you mentioned, Ann, maybe some of that, not all of it necessarily, but maybe some of this could be used for roads. It, there's a whole list of things. I'm sure we could figure out how to use it. Um, but roads might be one of those items that we could also, uh, put some of the funds towards. So there's, as Mike said, there's another pot of money there as well. John, did you have a comment?
I just wanted to update in case everyone didn't have what we discussed last September. At that time, there were projects A, B, C, D, and E that were presented to us. Based on what we've already are committing to, we've come, will have, or hopefully will complete A, B, and E this year, twenty twenty-one. C and D, C was Jennings, and, and as Kathleen alluded to, at that time was projected at seven hundred and thirty-one thousand. And Project D was the ones over on the northeast side here. Eastview, Morning View Drive, Forton Terrace, and Westwood. And those three added up to over a million at that time. So all I'm saying is based on what we were presented last year, and of course, there's probably new ones that are out there somewhere that were, haven't been presented to us yet. But based on what was left on our plate, it was either Jennings or the Eastview combination that we were aware of.
Mm-hmm. Thank you, John. That's, yeah, good point. And then the other thing too, um, if we wanted to do a project next year, which I really think we need to do, because it, um, I think our residents, uh, expect us to continue moving forward with this. Um, especially since we're levying a fair amount of money for roads. We, we can't wait for the, um, report that's coming back to us probably this fall. Uh, that's, that report will show us and be an indicator as to how we move forward in the next three to five years. So the report that was done in twenty seventeen is kind of what we're working off of right now. So just kind of FYI. So, um. So let me kind of recap.
Oh, can I ask one question, Lisa?
Um, yeah, go ahead.
So step one would be, uh, to have the neighborhood meeting. I just, and that would be within what, the next couple of weeks? Um, I just don't want to walk in to the neighbors or the residents and commit to this being done in twenty twenty-two when we don't really know what we're really doing in twenty twenty-one yet. Could we kind of just, um, at this meeting, say we're looking at doing in twenty twenty-two as a very strong possibility, but no one hundred percent certain commitment that this is the year we're going to do it. It may fall into twenty twenty-three.
Well, maybe what I would recommend is that we say the very next road or area that we do would be the Jennings Cove neighborhood. And we're, it looks, it looks feasible to do it in twenty-two. Uh, we just need to wait, um, until the end of April when these or till our May first, um, meeting, when we see the numbers for the twenty-one, uh, projects. I can't imagine that the numbers for the twenty-one project are going to come in four hundred thousand, five hundred thousand dollars over. But we can certainly wait and see. That would put us out sometime in June for our, um, neighborhood meeting. Any?
Okay.
Um, any other questions or comments?
This is Kathleen. I, I think we planned for that. I think, um, we, we go ahead, we start the process. But we make sure when we have the, the, you know, the letter goes out that we're planning on this. However, we're still waiting for twenty twenty-one's project numbers to come back. So it's not a guarantee. But I, I think we start moving forward because there is the money in the general fund that we allocated for the CARES that we can use if it does come back. Four hundred thousand dollars more than expected.
Yeah, we have, we already, yeah, right. We already have, um, more than expected in the roads fund alone. Um, then the other thing I talked to Brian about too is how much could we anticipate in early prepayments of our assessments? And I think, um, there's somewhere around a forty percent. And even if you cut that in half, saying, um, twenty percent of assessments will be prepaid this year. That goes right back into the road fund as well. So we can, but we don't, we can't, we can't wait until November to determine that. But I'm just saying, it's not huge amounts maybe, but it could be, you know, tens of thousands of dollars. So we can be looking at that. And that's something we could be using for mill and overlays and or overlays for twenty-two or, yeah, twenty-two. So, um, let's, um, let's do this. This is, let's, uh, agree if I can, um, that the, um, Jennings Cove area is the next, um, project we're going to do. We're looking at doing it in twenty-two. And we'll make that final determination at our May third meeting. And, uh, then at that point, we'll send out, um, shortly thereafter, we'll figure out a, uh, neighborhood meeting, uh, timing wise, uh, when we can do that. It'll probably be sometime in June. Is that agreeable to everybody?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
John, Kathleen, Pam?
Yep.
Okay. And then, uh, Allison, if we agree on May third and to move forward, then, um, which I'm confident we will, I, I, I think we will. But, uh, let's say we do, and do you see feasibly a neighborhood being able to put together, um, the right numbers and what you need to do to have a neighborhood meeting in June?
Yes, Madam Mayor.
Okay.
That can be accomplished. Yep.
All right. And then also maybe then, based on the numbers that come back on April twenty-eighth, because I know that's the bid opening day. Could you at our May third meeting put together a time schedule then for a potential project in twenty-two?
Yes. Yep. I have that on my notes here.
Okay, great. All right. Um, good. Then with that, uh, we'll move on to, any other questions or comments? All right. We'll move on to our broadband update and discussion. I'll hand this over to Ally.
Yes. Thank you, Madam Mayor and City Council. Um, so the City Council requested that staff provide an update at the second work session of each month on the progress of broadband and internet services. Since our last meeting, I met with Lakeside Networks. They, um, are a wireless internet service provider. They use existing towers and structures to install antennas to provide service. Right now, they are currently expanding coverage in the lake area and are interested in utilizing our water towers, uh, for a discounted rate. I requested that they provide an estimated coverage map so I can see if their coverage would actually reach the areas of Minatrista that it needs to. And as of today, I'm still waiting for that information. But pending that information, I do think it's a viable option for council. I also met with Midco. They provide broadband services, uh, to more rural areas of Minot, or Minnesota. Uh, they offer services similar to MediaCom, fiber to the home, hybrid fiber, and fixed wireless. We did discuss some options for cost sharing, but I again asked them to provide me with a coverage map to see if they would reach necessary areas, and I'm still waiting for that information as well. City Council also asked me to look a bit more into Verizon. So their rural home LTE service works by installing a router-like box at a location which pulls down a wireless signal. From then, customers can connect their devices to the Wi-Fi signal. This coverage does exist in certain areas of Minatrista, but is extremely, uh, address specific. So residents can check if this coverage is at their location. Um, if it is, residents need to purchase the router and set up an account with Verizon. Um, unfortunately, there is no, uh, option for the city to aid in expanding this coverage. But I can provide details on the city's website as an option for coverage. Um, and then residents can see if they have this option at their specific residence. Um, moving down to water tower access information, because some wireless broadband providers, specifically Lakeside Networks and Extra Time, were interested in accessing our water towers, I thought I would get a little more information to help you guys determine that's a viable option. Um, so in twenty twenty, the city received approximately a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars in total revenue from the three cell provider lease agreements. Um, in discussions with legal counsel, the city can lease any access to its property under whatever terms it wishes to negotiate, but cellphone companies do expect to be treated fairly. There is no real formula for aiding the city council in determining what is fair. Um, but these local companies like Extra Time and Lakeside Networks are providing a separate service from the large cellphone companies like Verizon, AT&amp;T, and Sprint. So we recommend that if or when these local broadband inter, internet providers uh, are discussed in the future, that the council keeps in mind fairness, flexibility, and a fair value, um, when considering a potential lease agreement. An update on the MediaCom correspondence and compliance review. Uh, at the previous work session, there was a letter in the packet which was sent to MediaCom shortly thereafter. They confirmed receipt later the following week. And I checked the status of a response on April sixth, and they had not had a chance to meet as a group. And that we have still not received a formal response from them. Since that original letter was sent, I inquired about the timeline for the deed project from our area director, Zach. Um, and he could not provide me a timeline, but said they are working on preparing for the eighty, um, eighty property deed grant build out. With that, we wanted to send a second letter to MediaCom to reiterate the desire to meet and tackle phase three in our agreement and expand on the eighty homes. So you will find that letter in attachment A of your packet. And if approved by the city council, we will be sending that here this week. Uh, working together with surrounding cities. So the letter in your previous work session packet was sent to the necessary cities. As of Thursday, I received a signed resolution of support from Greenfield, St. Bonnie and Medina. Tonka Bay, Victoria, and Independence replied that we, they will be presenting the resolution as well. Um, and I did hear from Orono on Friday, and they are going to present their resolution as well. So I'm hoping by the next work session, we should have all of those signed and, um, received. And Mike and Brian discussed the American Rescue Plan Act of twenty twenty-one. I included some information in your packet in attachment B for key aspects of the funds, um, that are important to Minatrista. We did receive some additional information late next week, so I don't know if you wanted to expand on that, Mike? Or we can just take questions as they come. But that is all I have, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Ally. Um, well, I think there's probably going to be a lot of questions. Yeah. So I guess I'll start out with the first question and then hand it over to the council. Um, so when we get these letters, these resolutions back from the cities, what are we going to do with these letters? What's the next step with, with that process?
Well, I think I'll jump in here, uh, Mayor and Council. I think what we'll do is we will review all of the, um, letters that we got and make sure that when we draft a letter, probably similar to the one that went to the neighboring cities, but obviously a little bit of a different slant to it. Uh, we'll put together a letter that will go to legislators that are involved in all these cities. A- as you know, it's a large geographical area and that we're not going to share all the same legislators, whether it's the county level or the state level. And we'll put together a letter that will go to them. It'll be on behalf of all these city councils. And we'll send that to them plus the resolutions just to, you know, demonstrate that we're unified in our actions here. And then I guess we'll just keep following up with them to try to see if they can, hopefully in St. Paul or at the Hennepin County, uh, do a better job of trying to advocate for our cities, uh, essentially. Um, as you've all are aware, you know, we're on the fringes of the metro area, but we're virtually like a outstate city that really doesn't have, uh, true full coverage of broadband services available to all our residents. I mean, we're working on it, but um, I think a lot of people, whether it's St. Paul or at Hennepin County, seed in downtown Minneapolis, think they're like, we're like every other suburb that's just got great internet, and that's just not the case. So we're hoping to raise awareness. We're hoping to demonstrate some unity. Um, I think at Hennepin County, we'll probably have a little bit better shot, uh, right now because they, like our city, are going to be starting up their budget process for twenty twenty-two. And who knows what could, uh, sneak into their budget, just like, um, when we talked to our county commissioner of a month or two ago. Uh, for the legislature, you know, this is just to get it on their docket. Um, I don't expect, uh, any sort of legislation to happen at this late date for their legislative session that's ongoing in St. Paul. Generally, they wrap up in May, and by now, if you haven't had it heard, it's not going to pass anything. But, you know, it's, it's to look for future years because we're not just looking for a grant for next year. We're looking for additional monies not only, uh, for our city, but for neighboring cities, but hopefully for many years to come. Um, to help, uh, get us better, uh, broadband service for our city. So to me, that's kind of the game plan once we have some unity, uh, and which cities are interested in, in, uh, with a, with a resolution, um, moving forward. So that's basically our goal in a nutshell.
All right. Thank you. All right. I'll take it to council. Um, and then I also have more questions. But first, well, you know, I'm going to start with Ann. I know this is kind of one of your big, um, issues as well as mine. So I'm going to hand it to you, Ann, with your questions.
Okay, thanks. Thank you, Lisa. Um, I'm going to, Ally, I'm going to go down the line and just ask you the questions I have as I go, okay?
Okay.
All right, Lakeside Networks, um, and Midco. First of all, let me make a statement. Um, one of the things that we all recognize is that if something were to happen to MediaCom, we wouldn't have any internet. We actually should have some sort of secondary internet provider. And so if Lakeside and Midco and Extra Time are possibilities, I think we definitely need to, uh, pursue that. Aside from the three hundred people that need the, the help. So with Lakeside, my question would be that we, um, if they already have customers, it would be great if we could find out um, what speeds they're getting.
Okay.
Okay. And then the same with Midco. And then, uh, the Verizon thing that's address specific, um, I just, I, it doesn't make any sense to me at all as to how they work and what they do. And I, I, I'm not, I'm not doubting that that's what they've said or that that's what it is. I just don't understand why it would be that way.
Yeah, I guess, so I had a phone call with, it had to have been a self, sales rep I was speaking to of sorts. Um, and I kind of got the runaround a little bit, but it seems that their coverage exists where it exists. So it's not expansive. They are not looking to expand their existing, uh, LTE rural home service. The service that does exist, they're looking to expand that to five G, but the actual geographic coverage that currently exists, I got the impression they have no interest in really expanding it. So it is what it is, where it is, uh, for the time being. So, I mean, on the same street, you know, three houses could have this Verizon coverage and three could not in there, you know, a few feet apart. I have no idea the rhyme or reason for that, but that is what I got told from the Verizon representative.
Okay, all right, fine. Then with Extra Time, uh, aside from finding out what the speeds, um, would be, um, we have here that the customer resident would pay an installation and then the cells. Do we know if the cells can be shared between neighbors?
They can, yes. They have a radius. I'm unsure what that is, but, um, one cell can be used to service a radius of residents. I know there is one, uh, they just installed one on a residence property and it serves a few surroundings. So it, I, again, it kind of depends on the density of the area that the pole is in. Um, it would depend on the radius of, um, neighbors served.
Okay. And then do we? Okay, and then do we have any idea what the monthly fee would be?
Um, I believe it's, oh, I have that information and just not at my fingertips. It's pretty reasonable. I want to say 40 to 60 bucks, depending on speeds.
Depending on speeds, I remember asking that question a while back, and David, you could correct me if I'm wrong, but it was somewhere around anywhere from 50 to $100 a month, depending on speeds, I think is.
Thank you, Lisa.
Yeah.
Very good.
The difference, Ann, between MediaCom and like Extra Time is the initial startup cost for residents.
Yes, yes, okay.
Correct, yep.
And then and then hometown fiber, oh, we decided that was not okay. Okay, that's fine. And so let me just ask, let me just ask this question. Do you feel, since Verizon and AT&amp;T do have an internet service, do you feel that they're going to suddenly become a lot more interested if we
If they have competition.
Yes, right.
Yeah. That was, that was my, my thought too. Maybe they'd be more interested if we say, hey, you can do it, or else we invite others in, and now you've got competition.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. I think that's, I think that's it for my questions for right now, yeah.
Okay, good. Anybody else?
I just had one quick. Can I, am I okay to talk?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay. Going back to Lakeside and Midco. Is there a date that you gave them that we'd like to get the information back on the coverage? Do you think we'd have that back by our 5/17 meeting update?
Um, for Lakeside Networks, definitely. I have not gotten any sort of communication or response from Midco since our meeting. So I'm not sure if they're just disinterested and didn't tell me it was a possibility. I've reached out a few times to Midco, so no promises on that one. But I do believe we can have a Lakeside Networks coverage map provided in the near future. He was working on it last week, so I'm hopeful, yes.
So, and you know, so he's got a month before next meeting to get this together. I would assume that'd be plenty of time. I think that's a real key element to which direction where he would like to go.
I agree. I will prod him a little bit for that information.
Anything else, Pam?
No, I'm just, I'm hoping MediaCom kind of comes to the party here.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, I'm kind of disappointed that they haven't been a little bit more aggressive in pursuing what we're interested in doing.
I will inform the council. I did get an email from Teresa earlier today that they were calculating the aid and construction costs for the city. So it's a bit strange. She's emailing me that when we haven't got a formal response. So it seems like they're working on some sort of amount to present in a formal response, but that's all the communication we've really had from them.
Yeah, and Mayor and Council, this is Mike Barone. I just thought I'd jump in here and just say why the second letter is being presented to you for your inspection tonight that we'll try to send here Tuesday or Wednesday. When Ally got that email from Zach, you know, I know Zach's just doing his job, but what was apparent to me was, at least that my take, was that they seemed to be focusing on just the 80 homes that are in the grant. And we did send that letter in mid-March saying, you know, we'd like to discuss Phase 3. This is a great time to discuss Phase 3 since we do have this grant, and we would like to explore the possibility, even with some city money, of expanding that to see if we can build out the rest of the city. And then when this email went from Zach to Ally, and it seemed to be like, eh, they're just focusing on the 80, it's like, I thought it was worth another follow-up letter, which is why you see that in your packet tonight. So that will go out, like I said, in the next day or so. But I just wanted to reiterate that, hey, we're not just interested in the 80 homes. We'd like to do something beyond that, hopefully all of them. But you know, if, if that's not something they want to talk about, then, you know, as you see in your report from Ally that she put together, that, you know, there are a few other options out there. So I mean, it's not like that's going to stop us. Even if they do agree to talk with us, I still think we can pursue some of these other options as well, depending on what kind of timelines we get for the eventual build out of the portion of the city that's unserved right now, so.
Okay, thanks, Mike. Kathleen, any questions or comments?
Yeah, Ally, do you know if any other towns or anyone has put like the Extra Time microcells or those on their water towers? Have they said if they've done that with other communities?
Yes, I believe they have in Greenfield. I want to say they have one very near, if not in Minatrista, existing. But yes, they have. They have services in surrounding communities.
Right, have they put them on their water towers?
Yes, I believe so. I don't know details.
Let me answer Kathleen. So in Independence, they didn't put it on their water tower. I think they built a, built a tower and put it on that, close to their, or on city property by City Hall. I don't know about Greenfield. That one, maybe Ally would have to double check or verify.
And I want to say Orono as well. Yep.
I'm just wondering if we could find out, you know, what they charge, I guess, so we could have comparisons of that. I had another question and I lost it.
So you're looking for the amount of those lease agreements with any cities that they have access to their water towers? Yeah, got it.
Yeah, and I think I think we could also expand that, just, you know, what's their penetration in any given neighboring community? And how are they providing that service? If it's not on a water tower, it could be like the mayor mentioned in Independence, they just built a monopole on the City Hall property and put their stuff up on top of that. So I mean, it doesn't have to be a water tower, but it could be a permanent structure or a pole or something that they're attached to. So we can try to find out those details.
Yeah, and then the other question, I thought of it. How, how far do each of the, the microcells go? Like how many miles or whatnot, just so we could get an idea of if we do Extra Time, how many we would need based on where the underserved areas are and how many, you know, to cover the area?
Yeah, I did ask Extra Time that. I wish I had that information pulled up, but they said about 20 to 25 microcells, very approximately, to cover the entire city. So I, I think they cover about a four to five mile radius at max. And then that covers however many customers would be in that service area.
Okay.
And I think Councilmember Refkin and City Council, you almost have to think of their infrastructure as kind of being like a series of Christmas lights. I mean, they kind of string them all together, and so one works off the other. You know, they're not just standalone. I think they do try to like talk to each other. So I don't know how far apart they need to be, but as Ally said, I think there is some distance where it doesn't work. But you know, because they do have a pole with a, some sort of antenna on it. But after that, it becomes a fiber connection or something to your home. So it's not all over the air, so, but the signal shows up at the tower as an over the air, so.
Yeah, I just found my email from Kyle over at Extra Time. And this kind of goes off your question, Councilmember Refkin and Lee says, they are in the Delano area, and he said it would take about 20 towers or microcells to cover the majority of Minatrista.
That's unserved.
Well, I'm not sure if it's unserved or currently served by MediaCom or anything, but.
Yeah, we'll have to, we'll have to pin that down.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, and John?
Just some general thoughts, following up on being or talking Extra Time. See that we, it's noted that they're already currently in a few areas of the city by providing fiber. Do, where are they? Do we know?
They just installed on Sunny Field. I'm not sure, I know one of the residents paid for the microcell actually to be installed. And I'm not sure how many customers that's currently serving, but I know there is one for sure in Sunny Field or on Sunny Field.
Do we know that if they're deploying to the areas and setting up their microcells, they're putting those poles, we don't know what size or what structure they are, or do we? And are they put on someone's personal property and they have an agreement with that individual that's serving the area? Or how does that work?
I think it's different for every customer. For this specific one, I know they made a deal with the customer to essentially put a pole up on his private property, and he gets a discounted rate for providing service to his neighbors as well. So his monthly rate is discounted.
Okay.
And I believe that's how they do it for the city of Independence as well. So the city gets a discounted internet rate because they're providing, they provided that microtower, microcell.
And then I'm assuming that they would put these up based on, obviously, geography and/or the distance that the microcell is functional. So they would overlap, so there's no dead area. I mean, that to me would be logical, but I would ask the question anyway. That must be what they do, that there's an overlap on the service.
I imagine so.
Okay, and then on Lakeside, or in any of the users or providers that are talking about using our water towers, I guess, unless I'm mistaken, my personal take on that is based on where our water towers are, we still would not be serving the majority of the unserved area or the more rural area, which tends to be the north and the northwest.
That would be correct.
Yep.
I, I agree with pursuing on MediaCom. To me, fiber optic is still stronger than wireless. Wireless has issues with weather conditions, et cetera. But certainly, running cable all over the country is, as we already know, is expensive. But I would continue to pursue MediaCom in that we've got the contracts with them and want to hear their answers. And then hopefully, we get some of these other outstanding answers that we're waiting from, from the other vendors.
Okay, so maybe a really good idea might be to invite the CEO, President of Extra Time in to give a presentation to the council, and here's why. There, they don't only do the cell or the wireless. They do the fiber optics as well. The cells kind of connect to the fiber optics, and then the fiber optics are in the ground. And I don't know how it all works. And, but when we met with them back last year, David and Mike and I, and who else was there? Anyhow.
I was.
Okay, thank you. You know, they, they explained it to us, and it might be beneficial for us, for the whole council, if they came in and then you could ask those exact questions. You could ask what the speed is, what the cost is, how, you know, all of these things that might help us, I think, formulate where we want to go with this a little bit better. Does that make sense? Is anybody interested in that?
Sure, I am.
I think that's a great idea, Madam Mayor. While we're at it, I think if Lakeside can provide enough coverage to make it viable, maybe we have them as well.
Correct, yep, I, I agree. And, and then that way too, we could get some cost estimates. What is this cost? Who shares the cost? That type of thing. Because I, I really want, I mean, I really think, it sounds to me like the Lakeside Network and the Extra Time, they might be more viable and more readily, if you will, more, more speedily available for our residents too. Whereas if we depend on, that's not to say we shouldn't continue to work with MediaCom as well, but I also think, as Ann was kind of pointing out earlier, that maybe if there's some competition out here, they might be more readily, they might think twice about dragging their feet on this too. So those are, I think, things to consider.
Okay, yeah, absolutely. I can invite them and get a list of questions that they should be prepared to answer as well.
Okay. Counsel, can you think of questions you'd like them to come and be prepared with? You don't have to have, have it tonight, but go ahead, Ann.
Yeah, I was, I was going to say, I'm not going to have them tonight, but I'd be happy to sit down and do a list.
Yeah, can we just email Ally as we come up with some, maybe?
Yep, that would be great.
Yep. For my own, so we basically are down to Lakeside, Midco, assuming they respond, Extra Time, and then MediaCom, right? Those are the four left.
That is what the staff would recommend, yes, is our kind of the four providers we should be, correct, yep.
Okay, perfect.
So So Mayor, I got a couple of other comments here, if you don't mind.
Okay, go ahead.
Just wanted to piggyback, so I think you, Councilmember Refkin, kind of boiled it down to the players that are, seem to be still in the mix here for the city. One of the things, as I mentioned a little earlier, is that we're going to send a second letter. And in both letters, the March letter and the letter we're about to send to them, we're requesting a meeting. Now, I don't know exactly how that meeting will be held, if it will be a virtual meeting or face to face. But nonetheless, we really want to have a meeting with the folks from MediaCom. And what I'll run out to the council as an idea tonight is I would like to have Mayor Whalen and Councilmember McGregor be participants in that meeting once we do get a chance to meet with MediaCom. I don't think there'd be any harm in having those two elected officials participate. I think it shows that we're truly interested in trying to find some resolution with our council. The good thing is, we don't violate the open meeting law by having a subgroup of two participate. And the other good thing is, you don't have any commitments that you can make. I mean, it's just kind of a listening session, and you can, we can be brokers and go back and forth between, once we do have this meeting and the full council with ideas and thoughts that might come up based on that meeting. So I don't know if the entire council's okay with that, but that's my proposal tonight. And we'll see what happens with the second letter. Hopefully, that won't change the fact that we want to meet. So, and I have one other comment. I'll wait till.
Well, hold on, yeah, let me ask. So first, I think we should ask Councilmember McGregor, would you be willing to be a part of that meeting?
Yes, I'd be very happy to be part of that meeting.
Okay, I figured so, but I better just check. And then council, rest of the council, are you okay with Mike's proposal?
I think it's a great idea.
Okay.
I agree.
All right, good. Okay, Mike?
Okay, and then one final item. You know, Ally touched on this in the report, the American Rescue Plan of 2021, which is the Biden money. We don't have any money in the bank yet, but I just wanted the council to be aware on Friday morning, after the packet went out, I did get an email from the League of Minnesota Cities, a couple of representatives, Daniel Lightfoot and Gary Carlson, they're both in their intergovernmental relations area, which basically means they help cities with stuff like this. And they just wanted to let us know, and we knew this, but we haven't, and I think this was because it's been probably three to four weeks since we had a session with LMC webinar that Brian and Ally and I participated in. They just wanted to let us know that there are 47 cities that were left off of the funding, the American Rescue Plan Act funding. One of those cities is us. And there's big and small cities. Another one of the cities is the city of Minnetoka. And the reason I mention that is Brad Weersen. is the city of Minnetoka. And the reason I mention that is Brad Weersum is the mayor for the city of Minnetoka, but also this calendar year, he is also the president of the League of Minnesota Cities on their board. And he put together a letter and he sent that to Janet Yellen, who heads up the US Department of Treasury in DC. And basically said, you know, there's a bit of an oversight here. Uh, we're one of those cities that are, uh, that's within this oversight. And we just wanted to make sure that you don't move forward without getting all of the cities into the mix, that should be into the mix. So, um, I have not had a chance to send that out to council. I will send that out tomorrow. I'll send out the email I received from LMC and then it'll have the attached letter as well. So I, just so you know that, um, we're in that group of 47, so we don't have any money, but we, we're basically, if the letter says, don't worry, you'll get the money. It's just that we're trying to work through this, so.
So Mike, would it be of benefit if we sent Ms. Yellen this, kind of a same letter? Would that help at all?
Um, uh, with all due respect, Mayor, I don't think it would make any difference. Um, they've, they're getting it from our league. And you gotta remember, they're dealing with 50 states and a whole bunch of state municipal, uh, associations like LMC. And then, you know, the president of the LMC for this year, Mayor, Mayor Weersum.
Yeah.
I, I, I don't think, I mean, it might help, but it, I don't, I think they've covered it is basically what I'm saying, so.
Okay, all right. Um, I just want to make one last comment. And that was on, um, MediaCom and, and the cost and the miles and so on. I think it said 70, it said it would be around $2 million for complete build out with MediaCom. And it's $75,000 a mile. However, I think that's a really, really low estimate. I really think that complete build out would be more like, uh, would be closer to 50 miles. And if you do the numbers, it's going to be well over 4 million. So I think we need to keep that in mind. I'm not sure where the 25 or 26 miles, if you, if you say 75,000 per mile, uh, it, it just doesn't add up. It's, it's a lot more than that. But, um, we'll work on that. And then the only other question is, at some point, I guess we would have to ask, would we extend, like, let's just say we extend a contract or want to extend an opportunity to, to Lakeside and or Extra Time? Would we extend it to both of them or just one of them? That would be something, we don't have to make that decision tonight, but it's just something to consider. Would one of them be interested or would none of them, neither one be interested if it's offered to both? That, that's, I guess, a question I would have. Anyhow, fuel for thought. All right.
Madam Mayor, I just want to make one clarification here. Uh, my 20 microcells didn't sound right when I was responding to Mr. Trumperland. So 20 microcells is what it would take to expand coverage to the customers who don't have any internet service. To expand coverage over the whole city, it would be approximately 50 to 70 microcells. So I just wanted to clarify that with Extra Time.
Okay, thank you. So, um, the other thing I'd like to see then, maybe in our next, um, for our next meeting, could we get a map showing, um, where, number one, we, where, um, MediaCom currently is, what areas it covers, and include the new areas that are coming online this year with the, with the broadband grant that they're getting, the additional 80 homes. Then also, um, what would Extra Time and or Lakeside, what areas would they be able to cover with either water towers and or additional towers? And how many would that be? So we'd have to kind of look at all of that. And then of course, we want to look at the speeds that they can provide. And what else was there?
Um, costs, who shares the costs.
Okay.
That's what I have down.
Okay. And then we're going to send you questions that we would like, um, either Extra Time or, um, Lakeside Networks answer. Be prepared to answer at our next meeting when they, if they can come in and do a presentation. Okay. I think that wraps it up. Anybody else? All right. With that, do we, we can have about five or six minutes? Or we can just, uh, to talk about the nuisance, otherwise, uh, we could move it on to our next meeting. If anybody has some comments or some quick suggestions, we can, again, we've got about five or six minutes.
Okay, this is Ann, and, and I'm, I'm going to suggest we do it, that we push it to the next time because, with my conversation with Mike this morning, I learned a lot. And I spent a lot of time yesterday, we actually reading the state statutes for the whole nuisance thing. And so at this point, I have a ton of questions. And so I think it would be best if we spent time on it.
I, I fully agree. And I'm that, I'm glad to hear your research. That's excellent. Thank you very much. I would fully agree. So I'm going to make, um, a recommendation that we move this to our work session, our first work session in May, and it be the first agenda item at that work session. So any opposing that idea?
No, but this is Kathleen. Do we need to have that work session start at 5:00 then to cover it?
Uh, Mike, do you know, let's keep that open. Because we'll see what else we have on the agenda. So Mike, would you be able to make that adjustment once you know what else is on the agenda?
I think so. Um, we'll meet tomorrow like we normally do and then the following Tuesday. And we'll keep that in mind for a 5 o'clock start versus a 5:30.
Okay, and then Council, would anybody have a problem starting at 5:00 versus 5:30?
No, actually, I'd like to start at 5:00 all the time.
Okay, all right. Kathleen and Pam?
I have no problem with that.
Okay, and John, you're okay with 5:00?
Yeah.
All right, so be prepared, we might start at 5:00. And so with, with that then, uh, that concludes all of our items then for, uh, this meeting. And with a motion, we can be adjourned.
This is Kathleen, some motion.
Thank you, Councilmember Refkin. And is there a second?
This is Ann.
And I think Councilmember McGregor made that second. So all those in favor will signify with aye. Um, I'm Lisa Whalen, I vote aye. And Ms. Refkin?
Aye.
Ms. McGregor?
Aye.
Mr. Trumperland?
Aye.
And Ms. Mortensen?
Aye.
All right, we are adjourned and we will talk again, uh, at 7 o'clock.